My clocks, it is time, so we'll call the meeting to order. All present and accounted for. Would everyone please rise and join us as we say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
We will see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything for the cause on the agenda? Do you have any extras?
I don't have any extras unless somebody else does.
Hearing no other additions, I would look for a motion to prove the agenda is shown. Removed.
A second.
Bill, seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry. Schedule presenters. Dylan Mackey's here, career navigation position.
Yes, and he's joined by Sarah Ness, who is a coordinator from the Southeast Service Cooperative, and they will be talking to us tonight about the career navigator position and the Future Forward website, if you remember that from this fall. So I'll turn it over to those guys.
I was hoping that you'd be able to stand up. Excuse me. Stand up and come over here where the camera can get you as well.
Okay.
Lucky you.
Well, thanks for having us. I'm Sarah Ness, I'm a program manager at Southeast Service Cooperative. Cannon Falls Public Schools actually works with our service cooperative quite a bit on various different programs and services, but we're here today to just give you a very high-level update on some work happening in the workforce development space, which is a newer initiative of the service cooperative. Just under a year ago, we actually got designated to receive some rural CTE grant dollars from the state of Minnesota, to the $201.5 million. And with that, that was to be directed back to our schools to help them and support them in career and technical education. And we have been following the model of some of our fellow service cooperatives around the state, because they were the grant recipients in years prior to us getting these funds. So we were able to learn from them some things that were going really well, that were extremely helpful to their schools, and learned some best practices from them. From those, two things kind of came to the top of their key learnings. One was, they needed some extra support in their schools through positions like our career navigators, and they needed a tool and a model to help connect their employers to their schools. So those are kind of the two things that we focused on. So we have Dylan Mackey here, who is Cannon Falls Career Navigator, and I'll let him talk a little bit about his position.
Sure. Thanks for having us tonight, guys, appreciate it. On the back of my card there, it tells you all of the schools. It also says it on the front of the brochure that I handed you guys. So I'm working with Pine Island, Zambroda Mazepa, Cannon Falls, and the Goodhue Education District out of Broadway. So I'll be working with you guys to collaboratively work on career-connected learning opportunities. Part of that entails going out into the community and actually strengthening our community partners, so meeting with businesses and trying to get them onto the Future Forward portal. Right now, in Cannon Falls and my other schools, we're working on, I'm just, right now I'm getting to know the schools. I'm meeting with the teachers, I'm understanding where they're at, where they're coming from as far as career and technical education specifically. From there, I've been getting out into the community, tapping into the Chamber of Commerce to help meet with employers in your guys' community. So any connections that you have, please email me, call me, whatever you have, I would be more than happy to go out and meet with them. Right now, for Future Forward, the implementation plan, we have a handful of educators in there now, with a full launch in fall of 2020. And Sarah's going to talk a little bit more about Future Forward.
Yes. So Jeff, it's nice enough to pull up the Future Forward website. So futureforward.org is the landing page for this tool. Whether you're a student, an educator, or a professional in the community, this is where you would go to log into the tool. Basically, this tool outlines, this landing page will outline the features and benefits for all the stakeholders that would use the tool. The tool is simply a piece of technology, and it doesn't work without people. So that is why we are really excited that you guys have a career navigator that's going to help connect the people and help support the people using the tool. But if you want to see the inside of the tool, I do have a recorded demonstration of the inside of the tool right here on this landing page, so you can stop in there and see that if you'd like, or you can take a minute and register for the tool yourselves and go play around in there. It only takes a minute. But what we're really excited about is what we learned from the Southwest Service Cooperative. They surveyed 700 of their students, and they asked their students, what are the top two influencers that help you decide what you want to do after high school? And as a lot of us in the education world know, parents is obviously the number-one influencer, but experiences is the second-biggest influencer that they have articulated. So we know, as schools, we have control over our school day and how we approach education with our students, so we're really excited that your school district is acknowledging that and looking for new ways to try to engage our students in meaningful ways. I will say, the nice piece about this tool is that there is a feedback loop in it. So after an experience takes place, we are going to be able to measure the impact that that experience is having on that student. We are also going to be able to measure impact and give feedback to our employers to help them lead really engaging opportunities so that they can use this as a potential recruitment tool as well, to identify great students that might want careers in that industry or specifically at that company. And yeah, it's got some great metrics on there. This is loosely based on, well, not loosely, it is based on a pilot project that happened in the West Metro area. And it had, if you know how to use net promoter scores, it got an 81 net promoter score, which 70 is considered world-class. So we are very, very excited. It's a great tool, and we're just really excited to support you guys in using it.
Yeah, and just one quick thing, on the brochure that I handed out, it does outline those four steps in getting involved in the Future Forward. Pretty simple. First name, last name, email, password, and then select your career cluster or industry.
So if they're aware of businesses that would be interested in something like this, they can either contact either one of you?
Me. Yep, it would be me.
Or push the business toward the website, or have them contact you first and then?
Either one would work. I would be more than happy to go out and talk with them about it, and if they want a short demo, I could do that, too. It is actually very user-friendly, once you get in there.
Any questions? If you have any overwhelming information?
Well, reach out to us if you have questions about it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second presenter is Jake, Community Ed and Activities Department.
I can do one of these. See if that works.
All right. Good evening. Jake Winchell, Activities Director here, giving you a quick update on registration numbers is what I'm hoping to do here. Okay, there it is again. Okay. Just a quick overview on everything that we offer here. I think a lot of times, so these are athletics listed here, and some of the other activities that we compete in. So there are some year-round activities up here that aren't listed, such as FFA and BPA and stuff like that, but I guess musical's up there, too, and some of those other things. But kind of a quick snapshot of what we offer each season, and there's some year-long activities, like I said, BPA and FFA and stuff like that as well. A couple of things to note here is that, you look at that winter season, I think lots of times we look at the winter season, it's like, oh, you got your four sports or maybe five, but we offer a whole bunch of opportunities for kids to get active and stuff in the wintertime. You know, it's not just boys basketball, girls basketball, dance team, wrestling, weightlifting, it's all kinds of things. Some of that's a co-op, as you can see, there, those ones with the two asterisks up there are co-ops that are hosted by Northfield. So we do allow our kids to participate in Alpine skiing as a member of the Northfield Raiders skiing team, or also they can be a part of the gymnastics team as well. So each year, it seems like we've seen there maybe two, kind of seems like is always the highest that we have. Right now, it's a sister combination in gymnastics, and then a brother-sister combination in Alpine skiing for the Northfield team. You also see there the single asterisks up there, those are co-ops that we host. So most of the time, actually, all those co-ops are with Randolph. We do have technically a co-op with a homeschool in town that's not actually in our school district. They're in the Northfield School District, but they have chosen to pick Cannon Falls as their town that they like to co-op with. So we did have to form a co-op with them as well, that was a couple of years ago. They're involved in a couple of different activities. So again, just kind of a snapshot of what we offer. Adaptive bowling is also a co-op, as you see in the spring there. That is, we are a member of the Goodhue County Gophers, which is Goodhue, Zambroda Mazepa, and, I'm forgetting, is it? Can anyone mingle? Can't remember. Can't remember off the top of my head who the other school is there. So we offer adaptive bowling, that's about five-years-old, something around there, and we did have one interesting note there, that first year we had a state champion from Cannon Falls in adaptive bowling, so it's been a great addition. Okay, participation rates here, these are female sports. So State High School League put out some stats, this was a couple of years ago, but they're top-five highest number of participants. You can see that ours kind of match up fairly close to that, and any numbers from the spring or from last year's numbers. So I actually expect that softball number, I looked this morning, this afternoon, they started today, but those registrations always trickle in, so softball probably is going to be up at least number three, if not number two. Good numbers off of softball this year. So as you can see there, they match up pretty well with what's happening at the State High School League level. On the male side, again, pretty much the same thing. Our baseball numbers are always really good here, but otherwise, they match up pretty good. Our soccer numbers are great, especially for a somewhat-new program. Baseball, traditionally, most schools in the conference, you try to fill four levels, varsity JV, seventh and eighth grade, we always have enough for a C squad team. It's just the baseball community, so baseball, wasn't surprised to see it up in second place there. Football numbers remain strong despite, you know, some concerns about injuries and stuff like that. We've had good numbers, and obviously, winning helps, they've had some good years recently. So backing up to that girls' basketball there, to the girls' side, they're proud of where girls' basketball and softball are at. It wasn't very long ago, and we were wondering if we'd have a varsity team, let alone fill five levels. So girls' basketball this year filled five levels. Softball will fill four, which is what the conference kind of anticipates that you'll do. We do have low numbers in the eighth-grade group in many of their female sports, but we have a whole bunch of seventh graders that were able to fill four levels. And we'll probably pick up some C squad games there for those girls, too, which will be a first time in my tenure here, so. As you can see here by grade, pretty similar there, at 12 o'clock there, that bright blue is our sixth graders, so you can see there's not a whole lot of them, so it goes all the way around. Twelfth graders would be at that dark blue spot at about, you know, 11 o'clock or so. So you can see that the boys maintain, their registration numbers a little bit better than the girls do, and there's more seniors, juniors and seniors playing the boys' sports still than there are on the girls' side. You look there, the sixth graders, I know that comes up a lot, sixth graders were added to certain sports a handful of years ago as a way to kind of generate some revenue. And it's only certain sports they can participate in, but there's only 13 girls participating who are sixth graders, and there's been 14 males. So not a ton of numbers there, it is a little bit of a headache, it lifts some gray area there and some stuff that they can and cannot do, they need to be a part of a junior high program only, they can't be a part of any of the high school stuff, they're supposed to have completely separate practices. There's some leeway with that, if you have one wrestling room, if they're in the same wrestling room, as long as that practice is separate, you have one set of tennis courts, as long as their practices are separate, you can still make it work. So had a lot of sixth graders participating, but it is, you know, I guess there's 27 of them total at $125 each, so there's some revenue coming in there. Seventy seventh-grade girls, 62 seventh-grade boys, and then all the way up to the 55 senior boys participating in athletics this year, and 32 females, so. Good to see good numbers throughout, pretty balanced throughout all the grades, and sometimes having, you know, all kinds of males, or even females, seniors, sometimes that can be difficult for coaches, you know, because you only have so many roster spots, and so having some attrition is actually good a little bit. So boy soccer is the one, that boy soccer just keeps their kids out. They've had like double-digit seniors the last couple of years, which is crazy. I don't think football usually even has double-digit seniors most years, so. Filling all levels, like I said, eighth-grade girls are kind of low, so we did have to use some seventh graders, but it's been a good fit for them. Eighth-grade softball is going to be a little bit low, but same deal, we're going to have a whole bunch of seventh graders who can fill that level for them. Just some quick data on some stuff from 1920, so 198 total females participating, 87 of them are multi-sport athletes, so about 44%. 12% are involved in a sport and a fine arts activity or some other activity. I didn't count robotics as a fine arts or anything like that, so 12% are involved in a sport and something else. 210 total males, 123 of them, or 59% are multi-sport athletes, so again, more males are multi-sport athletes, definitely helps the registration numbers, and then 16% are involved in a sport and/or a fine arts activity. That surprised me a little bit, I actually thought that females would be in the fine arts more, but I think that 16 is driven a lot by robotics and trap shooting and stuff like that. 6% roughly are students from Randolph who come over here, 3% are homeschooled, and we waive about approximately 12% of registration fees. They're waived either as an exchange student or if the family qualifies for free introduced lunch. So a couple of ways to get that fee eliminated there. What happens with Randolph students, and same thing when we are a member of a co-op, so Northfield will bill us, so at the end of the season, I'll tell Josh how many participants we had, he'll look at the budget, see how much we spent on transportation, coaching, registration, or, excuse me, entry fees, stuff like that, and so he'll get the total expense, we'll divide that by the total number of participants, and then Randolph gets billed for their share, their 6% of all of our wrestlers or whatever sport that is. And Northfield does the same for us. One of my favorite stats to look at is the average GPA of all-conference athletes, and it's always super-high. So for winter, or for fall and winter, the average GPA of athletes who are in all-conference is 3.486, which is awesome. And it'd be higher than that. We have some really high flyers who are really good athletes, too, so I always love to look at that stat. Couple of conference championships this year, baseball dating back to last year, and then high kick dance. Football advanced to the state tournament for the second straight year, and high kick dance tied for third, lost the tiebreaker, and took home fourth place in state dance. And the last slide here, just to look at participation fees, what we charge our kids. You'll see here, I could walk you through it, but ours is the second-highest in the conference currently. We've been at 125 for a handful of years, I bet probably seven or eight years we've been at 125. The only school higher currently is Rochester Lord's, and they've really looked at, they've really increased theirs, as you can see there, their nine through 12 varies from $175 to $695, depending on what sport it is. They have a new Activities Director in the last couple of years, and he's really looked at making sure that they break even on their athletics, so their registration numbers have gone through the roof, and they have a different demographic, for sure, and he says they haven't had really any pushback from that change. One thing unique about us is we charge the same fee for everything, except for that weightlifting team, but whether you're a junior high or high school athlete, you're paying $125. If you're a cheerleader, if you're a speech, if you're in the math league, you're paying $125 to be a part of that stuff. See, a lot of those other schools are doing 55, or 35, 25, stuff like that, so. Registration fees are a little bit high, but honestly, I don't get a lot of questions about it. You know, if a family asks a question, typically, they qualify for tuition or the fee waiver because of free introduced lunch, and if they don't qualify, I honestly don't get many questions about it, so. Any questions? I know there's a lot of information written real fast, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
When we co-op in athletics, they use both enrollments to determine what class you're in?
That changed last year, they now use 50% of the smaller school, or every smaller school. So Northfield, for example, they also have Randolph for a couple of co-ops, so they 100% of Northfield, and then 50% of Cannon Falls, and 50% of Randolph. That's a good question. Another, on those same lines there, we do have a couple of kids who are always interested in a co-op for hockey, and nobody's been willing to take us for hockey. We do currently have someone who's interested in the swim and dive as well, and again, it comes down to, these other schools sometimes don't want to take us on because it pushes them over, pushes them and the next class up, and for competition reasons, they don't want to do that. Or the other thing they say is, hey, our numbers are good, this came up with lacrosse a couple of years ago, our numbers are really good, how can I tell a parent that your kid's sitting on the bench because we want, because of Cannon Falls kids coming over and playing too? Well, some of our co-ops, we needed help with numbers as well, so those Randolph students helped us a little bit, but if it doesn't benefit both sides, I'm not sure if, you know, there's a use for it, so.
There was some conversation when soccer started that it was going to hurt football and/or cross-country. Have you found that to be true?
No, not at all. I don't think anyone would say that. I think maybe more on the girls' side, because there's an extra female sport in the fall, plus cheerleading, so I think maybe volleyball and tennis felt it. I'd say probably tennis the hardest, but I think the tennis and girl soccer numbers are both the same. Girl soccer, we fill, obviously, a varsity. Usually, we can do a JV and can play them at the same time, sometimes we don't have enough where we got to play them back-to-back. We'd love to have three levels of girl soccer, we haven't been able to get there yet, but hopefully, still keep building those numbers.
How were the arts numbers? We talk a lot about the athletics.
Yeah, so I had debate listed up there, debate's the one that we haven't been able to run the last couple of years, our magic number's 10 for debate, I think we get to about six or seven, so we haven't been able to run debate the last couple of years, but the speech are unbelievable, I think they're at 70 when I looked while I was putting this together, so, which is just crazy, so. And then we have some good stability in our fine arts programs with the musical, one at play, we've had good numbers in those, we've had the same director here for a handful of years, she took the fall off, but otherwise, she's been here, so that consistency's been really good for the fine arts as well. And math league, actually, our high school math league team today is at the state tournament, first time in school history at the state tournament, so. Haven't heard anything yet, but it's kind of a cool thing.
There's so many poles for kids nowadays, and, you know, sometimes if you're playing an athletic endeavor, you don't have time for band or choir or something like that, would you have any numbers on those activities? Or not?
Not off the top of my head, no, but you're right, there's, I mean, to put it down on paper here, it was just kind of like, wow, I mean, we really do offer a lot in the winter, and, I mean, every sport, but the winter, sometimes people look at as kind of a lighter season, but my gosh, there is a lot that is offered, and kids get pulled, and they have expectations to, you know, to put in time in the off-season and stuff like that, so kids are pulled a whole bunch of different ways. Lots of time commitment, for sure.
I know Mr. Hodg is always commenting on the size of our school and the offerings that we have, right?
Yeah, this is great. I mean, kids that are involved in activities are more invested in school and do better in school, so I like that, the fact that we offer a lot of different things. The other great thing about our programs is our coaches and our advisors share kids really well, too. You know, at bigger schools, sometimes kids have to commit to only one thing, but we don't have that problem here. We've got kids who are in all kinds of different stuff and are really, really busy outside of school, so, but that's good for them.
A number of years ago, we had to lessen a band teacher by 50% because we didn't have numbers. How do the numbers look in those areas?
They've been pretty consistent for the last few years, so our band is consistently, you know, around 70 students, and that can vary, you know, anywhere 10 fewer or 10 more depending on the year. And choir's been really consistent around between 70 and 80 students at the high school level, so the numbers have stayed really, really good, even with having a little bit less instruction in time.
We do offer, you know, there's a couple of schools in the conference that offer boys tennis, which we don't. There's four, maybe, a couple that offer gymnastics, we obviously don't, and then there's, Lord's has hockey, and then there's the Dakota County Wildcats, which is a co-op of basically everybody else in the area that, we're just a little bit too far north to get on that, but we're lucky to offer what we do, and a lot of it, we do right here and host it right here in Cannon Falls, other than gymnastics and Alpine skiing, so.
Can you go back to the grade point average?
Yeah.
So if I understood that correctly, that's our HBL all-conference.
Right.
So do you have the schools, our school, as far as what their grade point average is for all those kids that are participating?
For every sport, like for every, I don't have it right now, I could get it, it'd take some time, but, you know, that was a handful of GPAs instead of hundreds, but...
Yeah, well, I guess it'd kind of be interesting what Tim's saying, and can put that up in mind.
Oh, for sure, yep.
That turned in for basketball, our team GPA was a little over 3.1. As a team, and we're probably in the lower end of what we've been, 3.1's pretty good for a team, overall roster.
Yeah, cool, thank you. Any other questions for Jake? This will be his last presentation.
I have one. Is there any chance that Cannon Falls will ever get to host a cross-country meet?
Yes. Not that one's going to happen this year. We're going to have a new coach next year, and that is definitely something that we're going to say.
That we're going to try and do.
Yeah, we're going to find a way to host something, yep.
Okay.
We went through a process a year ago, it was actually a salary appeal, and we said, hey, you don't even host a meet, you know, so we said, well, we'll grant this appeal if you host a meet, and it didn't happen this year, so.
Okay.
But yes, absolutely, we want to host a meet.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just curious, because we've been in it for several years around, and I just was wondering why we didn't have one.
It's the only thing we don't host, you know.
Yeah, no, that's exactly.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, where do you do it? You've got a couple of courses in town, they've talked about the fairgrounds and some stuff at some places, so they've got a couple of places in mind.
In mine?
Yep.
Well, Brian will be excited. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jake, this is probably your last hurrah meeting, right?
Yeah.
Well, good luck, Jake.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to Bloomington?
Bloomington, that's right. And on April 1st, they start.
And you're making that drive.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Reports. Emma, what do you have for us today?
Okay, well, spring sports started today, so that's super exciting, so all of the sports that Mr. Winchell had up there in his presentations kicked off practices. I know a lot of kids were really excited about that. And like Mr. Winchell also said, that math league was competing at state today, I'm not sure how they did, but that's still really exciting, that first time in school history that our math league team has made it to state.
For math?
Yeah. And then, over the last week, on Wednesday, the band and choir went to all-conference at Randolph schools, and they both received superiors, so that's pretty remarkable. BPA competed at state Thursday and Friday, they're still waiting to hear their results, but a couple teams went and represented our school for that. Robotics was in Duluth this weekend, and they tied for the semifinals, and then I think they go to Iowa in a couple weeks, which is pretty exciting, too. The speech team got first at South St. Paul, I think we had one or two event champions, so that's also pretty awesome. And then the spring play was announced, auditions are March 17th and 18th, right after school, and it's the miraculous journey of Edward Tulane. I'm not sure when those performances are, but they're usually around Mother's Day. And then this Wednesday, we have a PLC day, which is also Activity Day at school, which is a lot of fun for, I really enjoy it, because I get total meetings all day, so it's a lot of fun, but, yeah, that's what I got for everybody.
I've got one, oh, I got one question for you. I heard that you're a recipient recently of a big scholarship. Can you maybe describe that a little bit? And pat yourself on the back a little bit?
So I applied for the Minnesota Journalist of the Year Scholarship, and I'm the runner-up for that, so that's pretty exciting, but, um, thank you.
Yes, very.
Yeah, you too. So, yeah, I hope that answered your question.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We do see your byline in the paper.
Articles are great.
So you're a celebrity on that line, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think I cut Brenda off.
No, I was just saying, thanks, Emma.
School committee reports, I think this is our session to have committee reports. Anybody have a committee report?
You probably received an email, the GCD Als County Board Meeting is coming up next week on the 18th, at, I believe, at 6:00 PM at the GCD Building, so you are all invited to come. If you can't come, if you could just let Cindy Lumen know, that'd be great, she's trying to get it ready for, I will be going, but if anyone else wants to go.
We've got a mail...
it's kind of a secret. Yeah, you got one in the mail, too. Yep. But if you can just either send that in, or, yep, or respond, yeah, or respond to her email, that would be great.
Anyone else?
The Ed Foundation is still gearing up for their auction, April 18th, and I'm sure they would still be accepting donations if anybody has anything they'd like to donate for the auction.
Coming up soon, and that's located...
That'll be at Mill Street this year.
Mill Street this year. Anyone else? Administrative board reports. Elementary school, I think, is attached, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Middle school, high school. Tim, did you get an opportunity to, was there one in there?
Do you know what in there? Yeah, I think it is.
Any other comments for it?
Nope, just the one big thing that we've done in the last couple of weeks is the flex time, adding that to the schedule. So from the conversations I've had with students and staff and parents, thanks to Katie, it's going very, very well. So we're really happy to be able to implement that this year.
Okay, nothing on tech. I take it community ed and activities was the presentation?
Yeah, one quick update, math team got sixth out of 10th, so.
Awesome.
Good showing, pretty tight. Pretty tight scores, four through 10, and they got sixth, so.
Good for them. Good for us. Nothing for maintenance and operations. Superintendent's report.
I have one item I want to bring up to you, and I believe there's a hot linked item in my report, but there's also a page here that talks about, I'm gonna be taking part in the National Superintendent Certification Program starting this summer in June. And one that makes this a little bit different than what you have had going in the past is that the previous program was held on either one coast or the other coast. This program is gonna be held in Rochester. The Southeast Superintendents Association gets a grant every, I think it's every five years, from the state organization, where they get a load of staff development money. And so they decided to put that toward bringing somebody here to Rochester. And so it's a phenomenal savings and a phenomenal opportunity for not only myself, but also for the other area soup's that haven't had a chance to fly out to either coast. And so this would be a dramatic savings to this, and I figured it would be a good chance to take part in this as well. So I wanted to let you know that I was doing that. And then, other than that, I don't have anything else in this case of questions.
Questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. Next page, public input. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to any issues that are, they wish to bring to our attention. Data privacy concerns notwithstanding. Does anyone here want to speak to the board about anything in particular, school-related? We're moving forward. Action items, we have no old business under new business. Consideration to approve retirement request effective June 4th in place of the resolution for placement on unrequested leave.
One of the staff members, Cindy DeRozier, who was placed on ULA at our last meeting, has requested and sent in her retirement letter for you to approve instead of being put on unrequested leave. So actually, we're approving a retirement letter in place of the resolution for placement of ULA at this point. And we want to thank Cindy for her 21 years of service to the district.
So we need a motion to, I guess, rescind that unrequested leave and replace it with a retirement request, correct?
No, all you have to do is just approve the retirement. It's just a simple approval.
Okay, so we don't have, okay. Move by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the retirement request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution for placement on unrequested leave of absence.
The next two items, items two and three, is the final steps in placing the next two individuals on unrequested leave of absence. The first one will be for Adam Nelson.
This is our last step sequentially, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve that.
And is the resolution?
Yep.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Bill. Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? Katie?
Resolution placing Adam Nelson on unrequested leave of absence, whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 adopted a resolution proposing placement of Adam Nelson on requested leave of absence on February 24th, 2020, on the grounds of lack or pupils and financial limitations. So we'll do roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Sorry, Bill. Bill?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes, that passes by a five to one vote.
Number three, consideration to who the resolution for placement on unrequested leave of absence.
This one will be for Stephen Strauss.
Motion to approve.
I will move to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Katie? Motion by Katie, seconded by Bill, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Okay, clerk?
Resolution placing Stephen Strauss on unrequested leave of absence, whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 adopted a resolution proposing placement of Stephen Strauss on unrequested leave of absence on February 24th, 2020, on the grounds of lack of pupils and financial limitations. Larry?
No.
Anna?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Um?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Katie?
Yes. I didn't hear your vote, Larry?
No.
No.
So that passes by a four to two vote. Consideration to approve a non-renewal resolution.
This is a non-renewal resolution of probationary teacher. And it's Brad Manke.
Okay, this one didn't, we didn't have it last time. This is a new one to us, right?
Yes. I will tell you that as a probationary teacher, and that we will need to replace it with the next agenda item.
Oh, that'll be number five.
Yeah.
Okay. Consideration to approve this non-renewal. A motion, please.
So move.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? Clerk?
Is this a resolution?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just a second, I'm just gonna get this in order here. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Brad Manke, a probationary teacher, whereas Brad Manke is a probationary teacher in Independent School District 252. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, the teaching contract of Brad Manke, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2019-2020 school year. Larry?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie?
That passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to post and hire a 1.0 FTE middle school, high school, special education teacher for 2021.
By approving this, this will allow us to advertise for the previous position.
Okay, look for a motion to post and hire.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Other discussion? All in favor of the consideration to post and hire, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consideration to approve a retirement request effective June 4, 2020.
Barb Byron has put in her request for retirement, and we'd like to offer congratulations after 20 years of service to the district.
Look for a motion to accept Barb's retirement request.
So move.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Further discussion?
How does this affect the reduction to the math department?
We'll be having an opening for her position.
Anything else? All in favor of the approval of Barb Byron's retirement request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you, Barb. Consideration to approve a retirement request effective 10/10 of 2020.
Yes, this is for Lee McNerlin, and she will be stepping down on October 10th for retirement after 34 years of service to the district. We want to congratulate her on that as well.
Love to approve.
Moved by Brenda. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the retirement request of Lee McNerlin, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a three-year leave of absent request in accordance with Article 10, leaves as absent, Section 12 of the Master Teachers Agreement.
Carissa Aldrich Joming has requested a three-year leave of absence in accordance with that part of the Teachers' Master Agreement. Statute for the state of Minnesota allows an extended leave of absence for three to five years unless it is negotiated lower for either one year or two year in agreement with the board. What I would recommend doing, I know that, I don't know what the past practice has been here, but when you put teachers out on leave, it's fine, because everybody has their own reasoning. And I don't know if we want to shut it off completely, but it is the board's choice to let teachers go out on extended leave of absence. But it is, one, it's tough to find teachers to come in and replace them, especially if they know that it's going to be a short-time event. And short time, I mean, three years seems like a short time, or a long time, but in reality, it's a short time. Because if that teacher comes back, then we have to release somebody at that time when they do come back. And so that can be a little rough on people as well. And so I don't know if you want to take a stance of allowing one of these per year, or you can continue to approve all of these that come forward to you. But at some point, it becomes a fairness issue as well to people that we hired and put in those places.
If something is in the Teachers' Master Agreement, doesn't that mean that it's in the master agreement? I mean, it's, we're obligated to follow that?
Well, the language is there, I think, is what you're saying, that it is to be brought to the board as an option.
The language in the contract is very minimal at the best, and we refer back to what the statute says for that. Usually, when people are requesting extended leaves of absences, they're referring to the statute that the state of Minnesota has, and the statute says three to five years unless the board and the asker have agreed upon either one or two years. But it's still at the board's discretion. It's not an automatic thing that they get put on an extended leave. So more informational here, but I just want you to consider that. I am recommending that we do approve Carissa's leave, but I think moving forward, we need to make sure that you have your mind set around how you want to handle these, you know, because some of these continue to be back-to-back-to-back, and so...
Would that be a change in policy, then, or would it be?
Probably more of a change in practice, I guess.
Yeah, there's no real policy written around doing them.
On how you grant it.
It's more using the statute as a guide.
As a guide, right. And so I think earlier, you said once per year, but I think you meant...
Oh, once per career. Yep. And so...
Oh, sick.
Yeah, I meant to say career, but my mouth said year. So, yes, so once per career, I think, would be, I don't think you want to shut it off completely.
Yeah.
From people, but I also think that there needs to be a balance of, if we're here to work, we need to work to, you know, somewhere. And I understand that things happen.
Yeah.
That things come up in people's lives.
Well, and this, is this completely different from like an FMLA leave or stuff like that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Because you could do this and an FMLA, or if you had to, like, to take care of somebody, or...
FMLA usually is, obviously, for, depending on what the FMLA is for.
For, yeah.
It can be extended up to a year.
Up to a year, something like that, right?
This is more long.
This is more long-term.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it'd be nice to have, you know, as long as you're recommending that, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward with it, but I certainly would want more discussion on it, maybe as an agenda item sometime, just...
We can bring the actual statute in.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
We can maybe bring that back next month as a discussion item.
Yeah, I'd like to see historical figures.
Yeah, or like how many times it's been used.
We can maybe give you numbers, but not names.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So.
I've always thought that it was an obligation of the board to okay these.
Well, obligation would be a strong word, I think.
I thought, I don't know that we've turned many down in a time.
True, but I think that's where Jeff's kind of bringing it to light.
Yeah, I think it's worth conversation, so. So on the table right now, we have a consideration to approve a three-year leave of absence. Brenda, on the approval?
I'll second.
Katie, on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of granting this three-year leave of absent request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the 1920 World's Best Workforce Plan document.
And within this document is the Strategic Priority Action Plan as part of our World's Best Workforce Plan document. So once we get to, I think the first step is probably going to finalize either tonight or next meeting or the next meeting after that, whenever that happens. Down near the bottom here, you'll see the Strategic Plan Priority Action Plan. So long document. The admin team, since you guys passed the five...
It's the next page. If you keep going, although I know it's this.
I think you have to go back up. It's just a link in here.
Oh, is it just linked in here?
I think I've had it sitting off to the side on the agenda, too.
See, it worked earlier for us.
Yeah, it was a, it was a separate link.
On the agenda as well, if it's easy to find it now.
Yeah, maybe I'll go back there.
It's before all that.
Either way, it will be embedded into this document. Here is the strategic priority. What the administration and cabinet team did was take the five strategic priorities that the board came up with after their strategic priority planning, and then Amy Grover from the Southeast Service Co-op combined all of our conversation and talking points into a spreadsheet, and also gave us pictures of what those, if you remember the little 3M sticky notes that we handed out that night. And we compiled all of those to the best of our abilities over a few meetings into this action plan. And tried to sort it out by groupings within each strategic priority. And then put to it a completion date and a project team on who would be working on And then put to it a completion date and a project team on who would be working on this, and then the status of when we had that completed. So there was quite a bit of work and energy, and probably, best of all, good discussions around each one of these items and where we are headed as an admin team, and hopefully as a district if you guys approve this. It's quite a document to take in without spending a little bit of time on it, so hopefully you guys have had time to take a look at this and comment or discuss on the plan itself. I foresee this plan taking about three years to the end of the '22-'23 school year, to hopefully be mostly completed. And at that time, we should probably do a review of it. I don't know if you want to go through each talking point at a time here, or if you guys have specific comments you want to talk about or questions that you might have about it?
I think, looking at it as a whole, there's a lot of good information here, but there are some things that feel... I guess I didn't quite understand if this is meant to be just a to-do list, or if it's supposed to be strategic. Because if you look at some of these pieces, they're not very strategic in nature.
Right.
And I think they might be more beneficial if we...
Narrowed it?
Give them more of strategic focus. And I think there's some things on here that maybe make more sense, like some of the ongoing things that we're doing. If it's ongoing, it's not really strategic, because if it's strategic, it has a hard end. This is something that I've used in strategic planning. So to go through each of those and make sure it's smart.
Smart goals?
Yeah. And I, so I felt like that was kind of lacking. Because there was someone here, like, if you go down to board and admin engagement with civic organizations, it lists several organizations and then just says "ongoing." Like, what activities are we supposed to be doing here? What are the desired outcomes? So that we know when it's done. Otherwise, if it's ongoing, it's just going to keep going and keep going, and we aren't going to know if it's something that we actually accomplished, and whether or not it was effective.
I think in that nature, the perspective of that group was really to get some relationship going, and so it would essentially be ongoing, but I think the initial one would probably be more strategic than what you're saying is getting it started.
Yeah. Or having like a small... like, having like your, your first small step towards that, to be able to have something to be, okay, we accomplished like that, now let's go to the... Is that, you know, like, kind of like...
Even if you're saying it's an action plan, what's the action here? That, that's, and there are, there are several in here that kind of feel that way. You know, what's the actual, like...
And I do see some of the act... like, I see some of the action, like, the exit surveys. I really like those, that idea of that that's exactly telling us how, what you're going to do to try and figure out why somebody might have left, or when somebody leaves elementary school, what they loved about it, what they didn't, what they thought could be improved, or however you're planning to do that. That gives us an idea of exactly what you're, what you're going to do. So some of them are a little more vague, like, like she was saying with the engagement in the civic org...
Put a verb in there. Start there.
I have to excuse myself. I'm sorry, I got to go to quiet.
So are you looking for more of the SMART goal under, like, with the civic engagement with the 1.4?
It was, I mean, I've got, I've got it marked in here. I can show it to you later.
That's fine.
I've actually got a lot of notes that are maybe not, just because I look at it from a different lens, so.
And the SMART goals, we get that here, because constantly writing SMART goals for the state and stuff. So that won't be an issue. It's just a matter of, do we could... Some of these, like you say, are checklist items.
And that's why I just wanted to better understand.
Do we lead the SMART goal at the bolded level?
Do they need to be SMART goals, all of them? Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I would have...
What would be your pleasure here, should we?
Well, I think, in the end, we're going to have to take it offline, but I think the concept is, is good, and what we're trying to do in taking it from what we started with and building it into our practices.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Right. And what you're saying is maybe...
Need to sharpen it.
Sharpen it, exactly. But I don't know that we want to necessarily throw things out with the bathwater either, because that's, that was what was given to us by that group.
Right.
Right. No, I'm not saying eliminate anything. I'm tightening, tightening it up so that it's more specific, so that we can say, yes, we did this, or no, we did not, and this was the outcome. Where if we're not specific from the start... I mean, and I, I've run into this professionally, where we have action items, and you get three years down the road, if this is a three-year plan, three years from now, like, what did we mean by this? Where if you start out with it being specific, you're not going to be asking yourself those questions down the road.
What we, what we'd like to do with this item? Table it? Is that, is that the conversation?
You said you had some written comments and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Do we want to have some sort of a admin board subcommittee that can go through some of those ideas and sharpen that up a little bit?
We could certainly do that.
I think that would help progress things. An ad hoc committee? And then sharpen this up and maybe bring it back, maybe at the next board meeting, if not the first April board meeting, depending on the timing of when we can meet.
Anna, you would like to be our board rep on that?
Sure. I can do that.
Seems like right in your wheelhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So...
Took about six pages at home.
Why don't you just plan to get together as an ad hoc group for further discussion? So we don't really have a, anything to approve here at this time. Correct?
Motion to table?
Is it just Anna?
Send it to ad hoc.
Yeah.
Okay. I think Anna has a...
Motion to send that to ad hoc.
Motion by Bill to send this to an ad hoc committee.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? We spend so much time on this, this is just a natural progress for it, so this is a good thing. Any other discussion? All in favor of moving this forward to an ad hoc committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes by a five-zero. Okay. Informational meetings, you see what's coming up next. We have a full plate at our next meeting, I can tell. Anything for the...
We do have some RFPs out for some of those items, so depending on the timing of those RFPs, we may or may not have some of those items on there as far as transportation and the audit, depending on when those get back to us, so. But the idea, I think, would be to have them at least by the first April meeting, for sure.
Anything other than what's listed here, or what could possibly be listed? Contact Lori or Jeff, and we can see if we can get it on the next agenda. Anything else for the cause this evening? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn. If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Oh. I'll second.
Anna on the motion, Larry on the second. Always one of our harder motions to get through. And there the discussion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.